Here.
Mrs. David.
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Frank. Ms. Greenstein.
Here.
Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Mr. Stoloff.
Here.
Mrs. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Student Board Representatives. Jenna Berman.
Here.
Michael Lacotta.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, please join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. Bye.
The next item on the agenda is the informational item, which is Document 1, which lists the board membership. The next item on the agenda is the selection of a temporary board president. We will now accept nominations for temporary board president.
I'll nominate Ronnie Hayman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for temporary board president? I would like a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Could we please vote for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The nominations for temporary president are now closed. Can I have a vote for the temporary president with a motion for this and then a second?
So moved.
Can I please have a vote for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. You are our temporary president. Yeah.
Use the power wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. The next item on the agenda is election of board president. We will now accept nominations. President.
I nominate Joe Antonio for board president.
Second.
Other nominations? I'm gonna close the nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Nominations are duly closed. A motion and second to accept Joe Antonio as board president. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Congratulations, Joe. Get care of my head.
Okay, so, thank you, everybody. Moving on, I'm going to accept nominations for board vice president.
I nominate Tracy Walsh.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other nomination? Oh, was that it? Oh, I saw. I jumped the button. I'm supposed to getting, I'm supposed to close nominating. I need to go back and. Thank you for that dispensation. Okay, so, congratulations Tracy Walsh on board vice president. Okay, next up is public comment. I have a note here. I think this is Carmena Taylor. There was a note here that she wanted to make the public comment during the reorg meeting. Okay, so Carmena Taylor, please.
Thank you very much for the exception. I saw that you changed the format of the regular meeting, so I didn't have anything that's on the agenda. Good evening, everyone. Ten years ago, I came to this board at the twentieth year reunion of my class, Class 89. And at that time, I requested to have the audienn named after our beloved principal, and it was approved. I'm here ten years later to submit a proposal to you for our thirtieth year reunion. Tina, could you pass it out to everyone? I was really conscious of making sure, Pat, I have everybody's name on the sheet, so we can make sure that we have the ones that I. Your names are on there, all the board members' names, so you can just find the one that's your name and take the paper and pass it on. I don't know. No. I thought I did it alphabetically. Is yours there, Debbie? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that each one of you got it while I was talking. So first of all, while you're passing that out, I just want to publicly thank Wade and Beth. For, since the beginning of this year, I have reached out to the school district to properly start the process for some of the things that we wanted to happen next year. My class decided that we wanted to celebrate our thirtieth year reunion in the spring. We're traditionally in Wissahicken, you do it in the fall. So it turns out that June 6, 2019, is the actual day we graduated thirty years ago. So it's also the class of nineteen's, 2019's graduation. So it's really poignant that this year, we're planning to have a three-day reunion, and primarily, most of our activities are on the campus here at Wissahicken. One of the things that we would like to do and propose to the board, and it's in reference to Policy Number 918, is to present to you guys an idea that we'd like to put a memorial sculpture of four classmates of ours that have passed away, and we wanted to memorialize them. And I asked a local artist, who's also a parent from the class of 2012, to design a sculpture that embodied what we wanted to convey to our classmates, as well as the school community. So on this piece of paper is a description of the work, the names of our classmates that we'd like to memorialize, and the date that we want to do it, and the language behind the policy. Now, because things have shifted and changed, I didn't know to start it at the committee level, the subcommittee level, or here. So I'm hoping that we can present it here to the board. I have my contact information here, that I can be redirected how we can go through the process of having this approved, or whatever else I need to do. The goal is if we could have a decision by the beginning of next year, I can start collecting the money from my classmates for the commission. It's, I'm only asking for it to be displayed in the stadium, if possible. I just wanted to highlight that one of my classmates' parent, mother, and her brother are here. They're from Ambler, Debbie Houston's family. Could you please stand up? Ms. Houston, her son is here. Karen Kaiser is the artist. She's here as well. And my classmates are here. And some of them that live locally weren't able to come today. We were gonna come last week because the weather was kind of bad. I didn't want them to come out. But I do have full support of my classmates for this proposal. I just want to procedurally go through it the proper way with all of you. So I appreciate you, Joe, giving me this time, because it's more appropriate for time-wise than them. Does anybody have any questions for me? Joe?
Thank you, Carmena. We'll have him and his team take a look at it and follow up with.
All right. Do you want me to make sure, Dr. Kurt, here. Tina, let's give one of them. All right. So thank you very much, board, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn this board reorg meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. So now, I'm going to call us to order, though, because we have more fun this evening. And I guess we have Mrs. Durkosh do another roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff? Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Student Board Representatives. Jenna Berman?
Here.
Michael Lacotta?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance again. And I guess. I pledge allegiance by the United States of America. Like deja vu. All over again. Yeah. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 3, 2018, public meeting of the Wissahicken School District Board of Directors. This is a voting meeting, which we will formally vote on items reviewed at last week's work session. And I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the board met in a executive session to discuss personnel matter. And moving on, Item 2 is a list of public meetings since our last one. Item 3 is upcoming meetings over the next month or so. And I'd like to point out that we are going to be having a special public board meeting next Monday, December 10, 5:30 PM. Official formal announcement will be fourth. Next item is presentations. One of our student board reps. Nice presentation. Is that correct? Michael or Jenna?
Hello, everyone. This is Kayla Bean. She's an 11th grader here at WHS. Her favorite subjects are history and biology, and in the near future, she wants to attend college to study biology. After graduating college, she hopes to get a job that involves either bio or teaching.
At West, she really embodies the West spirit. She's a member of camarada, the volleyball team, the GSA, or Gay Straight Alliance, the Pop Culture Club, Stars Tutoring NHS, and German NHS. Outside of school, she's a reenactment volunteer. In the future, at West, so far, she's seen improvement in our West spirit, but she hopes down the line to see even more improvement even after she graduates.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
The month of November had a great start with Wissahicken High School's first mini-thon on November 9. The night was filled with high-energy activities, as well as sentimental remembrance walks to show support and awareness for pediatric cancer. Many brave students shaved their heads for the cause, and there were many other fun activities for high-doning students, such as playing with puppies. The event was brought to life by an amazing student leadership team and many faculty sponsors. Overall, with the help of countless community sponsors, the event raised more than $30,000. Next up is the Student Assistance Program, or SAP. The Student Assistance Program has been established to support students experiencing concerns regarding mental health, issues involving substance use, behavior, and/or emotional difficulties that may pose as a hindrance to their academic success. Anyone can refer a student to the program, and there will be a well-equipped team of trained teachers, administrators, school counselors, and mental health and/or drug and alcohol consultants that can help. The goal of the Student Assistance Program is to provide supportive interventions and recommendations for each student's success. If any further help is needed, the team can provide information to help families gain access to the community's resources. Across the United States, millions of households with school-aged children lack high-quality internet access at home. This homework gap separates students and creates imbalances in performance and confidence. Mr. J. Van Castle, WHS Special Education Teacher, collected information to supply students with access to free internet in our community. This list can be found on the school website for anyone to use and access. For sports, the Wissahicken High School football team was selected by the coaches of the SOL American Conference to receive the Sportsmanship Award. Also, at a recent SOL All-League meeting, many of our football players were selected to the SOL American All-League Team based on their skills and efforts given this 2018 season. Over the winter, the team hopes to continue to fine-tune their skills on the field for the coming season in 2019. For cheerleading, as the fall season of cheerleading came to an end, the team welcomed countless new members to the team for the winter season. They're looking forward to cheering on Wiss's varsity boys and girls basketball teams. Recently, they've been working hard preparing for the Suburban One competition on January 5 and the Central Bucks West competition on January 20. For boys cross-country, the team found great success this season, ending it undefeated, while also winning the Suburban American Championship meet. This was their fourth Suburban American Championship title in the last five years. The boys soccer team ended their season with a 10-7-2 record, and the team was also runner-up in the American Conference and the 17th seed in district playoffs. They played their hearts out at their playoff game against Council Rock North, but unfortunately lost 2-0. The junior varsity team had an impressive season with a team record of 12-3-3. The ninth-grade soccer team, coached by Mr. Lomedy, had the most remarkable season with an undefeated 14-0 season. For basketball, during November, the winter season for boys and girls basketball has gotten underway. Each team has been endlessly practicing under two great coaches, Mr. Wilson for varsity boys basketball, and Mr. Klein for varsity girls basketball. Their seasons to come will be a thrilling time, and in January will be the annual Silent Night game for the boys basketball team. Wissahicken marching band was wrapping up their season on Saturday with the Ambler Holiday Parade. They represented the high school proudly with their beautiful performances throughout the day. Over their long season, they rehearsed a total of 200 hours and performed at all in-season football games. Indoor color guard will be starting soon, in the next week or so. For the fabrication laboratory, construction has finally ended on WHS's new fabrication lab, and students are learning about the new resources and machinery. Everyone is excited to get their hands dirty and learn the endless possibility of projects that can be accomplished in the newly renovated workshop. Model UN team at WHS went to American University in Washington, DC for the Washington International Relations Conference on November 3. The Model UN Security Council members were trained in parliamentary procedure and participated in both a protocol simulation and a crisis simulation while there. This event allowed the new Model UN team to get their hands dirty in the world of international relations. Starting last year by seniors Kyla Frenier and Allison Michaels, the club has taken, many added, has added many new dedicated members this school year, and hopes to gain more in the coming years after their graduation. For Students of the Month, on behalf of everyone at WHS, wanted to say congratulations to our Students of the Month. For the month of November, Miles Brown was awarded the Science Student of the Month, Kar Wyler for World Language, Bobby McFarlane for Health and PE, Alejandra Peraza Kerber for Math, Lucas Towers for Social Studies, Catherine Yoon for North Monco Technical Career Center, Brian Fennell for Business Technology, Family Consumer Science, Caroline Zager for Art and Music, Leah Dubin for Athletics, Paul DeVideo for Good Citizenship, Owen Bain, Annabelle Klein, and Rebecca Dolphman for Kindness, who all ran the mini-thon. The, to ensure the safety of all students, the high school is enforcing changes to the building access. In regards to before and after-school activities, the school officials, coupled with our school's official policewoman, Officer Beth, the school wants to make sure that students are safe before and after the school bell rings. These changes were effective immediately returning from Thanksgiving break. For many drives and fundraisers, it's that time of year again, and the high school has already begun sponsoring our annual holiday toy collection. WEA is proud to sponsor this endeavor in conjunction with the district administration to support our local families. All toys will be donated to the Maddie Dixon Cupboard, the Lower Gwinnett Police Department, and our local chapter of Toys for Tots. For most over, for most of November, the school has been collecting money for Trucks for Maddox Organization. Students can donate to the organization in homeroom or at the main office. The students of Mr. Mog and some other teachers have been competing head-to-head to bring in the most clothes to be donated for a good cause. Each of Mr. Mog's Language Arts classes can earn points for donating items to this drive. This has sparked a large crowdfund of people who got rid of some old clothes that could be repurposed and used by somebody else who needs them. The clothes were dropped off for donation at the end of November. As for robotics, on November 3, the robotics team hosted our annual competition Ramp Riot. The event brought 52 teams from over three states, and more than 2,500 spectators came to enjoy the arena-style competition. In addition to the awesome competition, the robotics team collected 300 cans of food for the Maddie Dixon Cupboard in Ambler to help the community. The event is used as a way to motivate students to get involved in robotics, whether that be at WIS or elsewhere, and to have the opportunity to collaborate with peers. Our top robot, Ms. Daisy, earned a gracious professionalism award at Ramp Riot. The winter season for robotics is just on the horizon, and there will be tons more fun in the months to come. Our CASA Club and School Counseling Office sponsored a trip to Westchester University on November 8. Students in grades 9 through 12 were invited to attend the campus visit. The students learned about the process of admission, took a tour of the campus, and enjoyed a college-style lunch in the dining hall. Many students from the National Honor Society demonstrated their commitment to civic responsibility by volunteering at the polls on November 6. Some eligible students also voted in this past election, marking their first ever registered vote, voting election. The applications for this year's new NHS members have been accounted for, and many juniors and seniors will be joining the organization. This January, the induction ceremony will welcome all of these new members to the Honor Society. To celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday, Spanish National Honor Society held a Friendsgiving lunch of their own. The students brought numerous ethnic foods relating to Spanish heritage and celebrated with laughter and fun activities relating to the holiday. For drama, on November 9 and 10, the WHS Theater Company put on their rendition of the play Peer Grint by Henrik Ibsen. The play was a mix of witty banter and sorrowful moments that ultimately made a loving, a lovely performance from all students. Many of the same students who acted in the fall drama will also be in this year's Spring Musical, Chicago. For German National Honor Society, many students stayed after school before Thanksgiving to make, paint kindness rocks, which will be distributed and hidden all over the district at the, all of the elementary schools and the middle school. And any student who finds one can take one, and hopefully will foster a love of the German language, or get them curious for it. For chorus or camarada, in this coming month of December, the Advanced Choral Group will be getting into the holiday spirit and doing numerous performances over the next three weeks. The WHS Chorus Concert will be tomorrow night at 7:00 PM for anyone who wants to come hear the high school's amazing singers and to see the masterful handiwork of choral director, Mr. John Conahan. Following week on Wednesday, December 12, the Wissahicken Camarada has been invited to sing on the radio at Temple University's classical radio station, WRTI. They go on air sometime around 11:00 in the morning, and will be singing the current semester's repertoire, including some festive holiday songs. Last week before Christmas break, the Camarada will be welcoming all to join them in their performance of Silent Night at the Kimmel Center on Monday, December 18. Anyone is free to come and watch or join in on singing. Sponsored by WRTI, Greg Whiteside will be hosting the event, and will be livestreaming, and it will be livestreamed for all to see. The day after, the Camarada will give back to the community by caroling at various elderly and assisted living centers in and around the Wissahicken community. That Friday before winter break, there will be their district-wide caroling extravaganza, where the group travels to each of Wissahicken's schools, including Central Office, to spread some holiday cheer. Thank you.
All right. You?
Excuse me, before you leave.
Yes.
You mentioned that there is a free web available.
Yes.
And that there is a link that you, that could be found.
Yes.
Before sending this down into the rabbit hole, can it be placed somewhere that it would be more easily found or more prominently positioned, perhaps?
Are you talking about the free internet access?
Right. You mentioned, she mentioned some research had done, so that this link would be rather prominent.
We, we have it on, Kristen, you can help me here. We have it on the website now, yes?
And where is it?
Which section? So we have it right here. That's under Family Resources Section, Community tab. My understanding, it was a, it was a teacher, I guess, who compiled the information of like free hi, free Wi-Fi hotspots around the.
Yeah. It uses a lot of coffee shops, like the Giant in Spring House, the Starbucks around the area, different coffee shops, the public libraries.
Great. Thanks, Kayla.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the first of two public comment sections on our agenda. This first one is for comments on agenda items. And I believe we have one registered, Lorentis. And as a reminder, to note, instructions for speakers are.
Good evening, Christine DiLorenz in Ambler. This evening, you will be voting on a proposal to provide a feasibility study for the supplementary survey for the athletic facilities. When this was discussed last week, there were lots of people talking about all of the different sports people that would, the sports teams that would, would benefit from this. And I don't want you to forget about the marching band, because what happens is when the sports teams get jumped, get bumped to another field or into the gym, then the band gets bumped out of the gym, or out of their field. So a lot of people don't understand or don't realize that the marching band is actually under, under the sports umbrella, and they, they are considered a sport here at the, at the district. And they're wangling for all of this space, just like the football team, and the soccer team, and the softball team, and the baseball team is. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the report of the board president. And I have one change to note from last. Agenda item 15A is going to be for the, or reappointment of our board representative to the North Monco Technical Career Center. I'd mentioned last week that Ronnie Hayman, who had served in that position, her term is expiring, and we needed to point someone to that position prior to their next meeting in December, which I think is December 7. Ronnie would love to continue in her role representing us at North Monco Technical Career Center. So although on the, on the agenda, it has a blank spot, I would ask Durkosh or Wade or someone to, Ronnie, here, the one that comes up for a vote later. Ronnie, represent us. Questions about that? That, that's it for me. So, report of the pretendant.
Jim? Okay, thank you. One item tonight, and that's the discussion about how the district will handle, or currently handles, payment of AP exam fees and ideas for possible. What I thought I would do is I'd set the table a little bit with some background. I would certainly invite our student board reps to chime in. Something tells me you've had a little experience in this matter. And then we'll also hear from board members. Guys, we don't have to, we don't have to actually take a vote tonight, but we do need a sort of census, because as I was saying in a previous communication, the students are gonna start making decisions about next, gonna change anything. We should at least give some sense of direction, high school patients, they can share their information with students. So as you, as you may know, currently, we do, as a district, pay for all of the AP exams that our students take. And actually, we also currently require everyone in an AP course to take the exam. So our thinking along those lines, and this has gone back for a number of years now, but our thinking is, if it's gonna be required. So I previously shared, and I won't go over all of them right now, positives to maybe changing and not requiring the exam. There's some negatives to changing. I just want to highlight the, the notion that if we, we begin to not require it, it could be the case that actually students, the average students might feel a little less pressure, because they might want to take the AP course but not at the exam. That's a good thing. We might have average test scores as a whole go up, because sometimes students are forced to take the test, don't care about it, and they fill it in, if you will. Some of the negatives of not requiring exams, the faculty feel very strongly that, that having that exam requirement actually helps keep a level of intensity or a level of interest in the course over the polls. And also, I just want to highlight that we don't pay attention to this school, national, like school rankings sites. There's a handful of them here and there. But I want everyone to be very clear that those sites often use as a variable percentage of kids at your school that take AP exam. So I don't want us to make any changes going in blind on that. Couldn't certainly make any decisions based on what some outside ranking metric. I, I'd suggest an edit all, but I don't want you to be surprised. So we came up with, we did survey the county, and 13 districts responded. Three districts pay for AP exams now. Some limit that, or they all limit it actually to either one or two per year per student. We don't have any limits. Two of the districts require the AP exam to be taken.
Jim, that, two out of the three that pay for the.
No, two of 13.
So there's two that require the AP exam to be taken, but don't.
One. One of them, strangely enough, requires it be paid, taken, but doesn't pay. We will not mention that district on public data here.
Why not?
Well, because, because they're my friend. So we have some options moving forward. We could do nothing and no change, which would be a cost savings of zero, obviously. And by the way, the, the cost to the district of paying for exams the way we do now is about $80,000 a year, all total. We could change to pay up for two exams per student. And our option is we could change to pay for up to one exam per student per year. Those are options. It's very difficult to guess at the cost savings, because we would also have to be guessing at student behavior once they found out. Once they found out that there, not all these things are going to be paid for. But a rough estimate, paying for two, I think would cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. Paying for one per year, about half of the eighties, about thousand dollar savings. Another option is to stop paying entirely. And, uh, that would, of course, save us eight thousand dollars. Something I, I, uh, just came up today as an option would be, uh, kind of a hybrid, is to, um, pay for all the exams the way we do now, let's stop requiring them. That would, of course, reduce the number of exams taken by some amount, hard to tell what, that would, uh, some cost savings. There's a spectrum of savings here. There's a zero dollar savings, all the way to eighty thousand, and a couple things in between, you choose. It's hard, I know, because we haven't started yet the budget, uh, process, and we have, we don't really have a sense of how much we have to cut. And so it's, anyways, it's fortunate we have to do this now, but not a huge dollar figure we're talking about, and we could adjust it again next year if we had an event. That's setting the table.
Well, um, to provide a little bit of context, in particular for our student board reps who not have been involved in discussions, um, the topic of our AP exam test came up last year during the budget development cycle. Uh, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars, as, as Jim had said, and there was some discussion about changing our approach to it in order to generate some cost savings, um, because of other pressures with budget. But at the time, we were getting deep into that discussion, it was kind of late, the, the process and to dramatic change in policy, we felt would be unfair to students who enrolled in AP here without shifting policy that could have a. So we, um, made a little note to ourselves, so like, let's bring it up earlier next time so we can actually talk about it with enough time to make a reasonable judgment. So, I mean, that, that's kind of the backstory of why it's come up. Jim and his team put together a bunch of, for us to consider. With that, I guess, I'll open up to board members who want to ask questions or make comments about, um, our approach to all of them.
Well, since I was one of the people, I guess, um, asking about our payment of the exams, I, I'll put in a few thoughts. And this is coming from the perspective, I was a school counselor for fifteen years at a high school in Montgomery County, and also actually was an AP, AP English teacher at one point. If we look at the numbers, it is, when I came to Whistahicken on the board, I was shocked that we're paying for all these exams, to be frank with you. Uh, and looking at the numbers in the county, we are, if my understanding is correct, Jim, we're the only district of thirteen paying for all the exams. Is that correct?
Um, of the thirteen that responded, yes, we're the only one to pay for unlimited exam.
Given that the cost is really be another teacher somewhere in the, in the school district, uh, it's pretty astronomical. Uh, my experience is that working in schools, multiple schools where, uh, students somewhere required, somewhere weren't required to take exams, uh, had zero impact on the number of students taking those courses. Students are taking those courses because they feel that they need that level of education or they want those courses on their transcripts. And students ordinarily, um, Jim, as you pointed out, um, when students are forced to take the exam, you will overall bring down your, your exam scores. You have students taking the exam who are not prepared for the exam, don't want to take the exam, are applying to colleges. At the point the exams occur, guys, um, many students already know where they're going to college, especially seniors. They already know whether or not they are going to a college that accepts AP credits and often will just not take the exam seriously. Further, my experience is that students who are taking courses where there are really strong teachers, uh, have a huge number of kids taking the exam because they know they're prepared and they'll be scoring well enough that the exams, uh, will be proud of their scores and want them on the transcript. Student scores do not have to go on, on the transcripts, that's strictly up to the student. Uh, so students who are not scoring well are not putting their exam scores on anyway. And I would suggest that, uh, we consider, you know, maybe not bumping out all of the payment, but maybe limiting it to one, uh, or two, uh, this coming year. And to see whether, in fact, that impacts in any way the number of students who are registering for these courses with the number of students who are taking the exams. Uh, and we reassess, um, again, by next year to see whether we need to go back to paying for more or back pay for less. Thank you.
Ask a question about what you said. So let's say we reach a, maybe forward, will there be? Last. As far as taking the. What would happen?
Student would choose to take the exam and have to pay for any exams beyond the two. Some students take up to four or five, sometimes AP courses per year. Uh, and I do, I would suggest there's a correlation between the, you know, when you have that number, students taking that number of exams, those students are applying to highest powered schools. And I would presume that, um, the payment is an investment toward their future from their family, just like applying to colleges costs money. Uh, this is part of the application process in some respects, applying for college. Uh, some schools, formerly I was at Upper Merian, uh, the exam was not required. And again, students usually opted to take them if they felt prepared for them. Um, and the way that those teachers worked is that if the students opted not to take the exam, the practice exam was used as a final exam score. And just so we also understand, these exams occur in early May. So the fact of the exams keeping students invested throughout the school year is actually a false assumption. And in fact, when those, uh, exams are finished, often those kids are, in reality, finish that course. Schools that require a final exam in addition to the AP exam are actually the kids who continue to work through the fourth marking period.
Well, um, we have the benefit of actually having high school students here, serving as our student board reps, and I'd be curious to hear your perspective or opinion on paying for AP exam.
I think you bring up an interesting point about, um, the final exams because, um, most teachers, at least in my experience, have used the mock as the final, um, exam was the final, like, test. And so the mock really, at least for, for me and like for my peers who I was in the AP courses with, um, felt as if the exam was something outside of the course in Whistahicken because it was associated with the college board and we had the option of submitting our scores or not. So, um, I don't, uh, this isn't probably what you want to hear, but I, I know some, some of my peers who didn't take like one of the exams seriously because they knew, oh, I'm probably not going to do well. So they drew like a hand turkey on like the essay part. So if, if, um, all students weren't required to take this, you might eliminate some of those, like, I guess, students who aren't highly motivated themselves or don't have as much confidence as they would as a student voluntarily opted for the exam.
I would also, uh, comment that, uh, like, paying for the exam is definitely beneficial to some of the students who may not afford to pay, um, be able to afford to pay for the exams otherwise. That offers them the opportunity to kind of like have something paid for them or they're able to get college credit and then not have to pay again down the line, um, for that college credit. Um, and in addition, I thought, um, as Chrisfield brought up, an interesting point when he, uh, mentioned, um, for us paying for the exams, not requiring them anymore, because I know for any of the AP language courses, like, I'll be enrolled in one next year, there's no way if I wasn't required to take the exam that I would actually take it. Um, but like for some of, like, the trips that are offered by our school, um, that are also like financially suitable for people in lower income brackets, uh, they're going to go on those trips to be able to, and then they're going to have to take the AP course, even though they may not be suited to take the AP exam. And so you definitely eliminate, um, some like funds, like, on those kids who aren't going to take the exam anymore, in addition to the seniors, um, who are already enrolled in college courses, who aren't going to take the exams anymore. But I definitely think, um, paying for the AP exam, like, does alleviate some of the stress for the students who are in the courses, but then money's not a question when they're taking the exam and they're not questioning whether they should take it, they don't want to waste their parents' money, um, and they're not like having the stress of their parents paying for it, and then they fail, they wasted their parents' money, um, and issues like that. So I definitely think paying for it in some regard would definitely be the kind of the right route to take, whether it be two, three, or just, um, taking away the, like, requirement.
Um, going off of that, of, um, Michael's point where we'd still be paying for the exams in some regard, um, after I came back from, um, Michael's meeting with Dr. Blair, um, I surveyed my sociology class because that was just the class I was in, and it, it had juniors and seniors, and, um, of course, it wasn't an AP class, but they were enrolled in AP classes. And all of the seniors, um, when I brought the topic up, um, were fine with the exams not being paid for and the exams being optional because by the time we're in May, we've already committed and usually know if the college takes like AP, um, AP credit or not, um, or what kind of scores we need. Um, but the juniors were all like adamantly against it because, you know, they, they usually will be reporting the scores to the colleges and their future is still sort of unclear in that regard.
And I just think, like, one more option to maybe consider is, I don't know if this is like allowed, but having the, um, exams be paid for like up till junior year and then not be paid for senior year, because like oftentimes, like, the seniors, like, uh, Jenna just said, aren't going to take the exam because for most of them, they're either going to a college where the credits don't count anyway, or they're already, um, in a college and they don't need to submit those scores. So really, what's the point of taking the exam? It's pretty much just a morning where you're forced to sit in school on a Saturday. So they're going to kind of just kind of go through the exam as quickly as possible to leave. So not offering payment for those students might also save a lot of money in like the long run, um, on the exams. But like, I know all juniors are going to want to take the exams, and based off of students I know in most of my courses, it's upwards of three or four exams, so limiting could become an issue.
That's an interesting six option, kind of, so, uh, to, to not pay for junior. My, my thought there, and I'm not sure this has any relevance or not, is that for those students who are set on, on using the AP performance to get some college credit, then, and sometimes those are kids who may be, um, and maybe either in the, um, they're kids from low income households or kids are historically in the achievement gap and they're looking to get a leg up, I would, we'd have to think about the effect on them. A senior, they probably still taking it and hoping to get three credits in whatever they're in. But it may be there's some way of fixing that in because I totally see the point about seniors having a different mindset than I already proved it from sociology class.
If I could only, though, add, Jim, I mean, in response to that, that very few school, very few colleges afford credit these days. What they do is they waive requirements. Colleges don't want to give away a semester of tuition. So, and the college board does provide for fee waivers for SATs and AP exams. The students who are in need certainly would be able to get help in paying for those exams or the exams would be paid for. Uh, additionally, I would suggest that if, uh, and I say this as a former counselor, if the counselors are in touch with their students, really know their students, they would know students who perhaps are having some financial issues, maybe their parents aren't on free reduced lunch, uh, but are having financial issues. And I know that we often would go and seek out funds from our school general fund to pay for those AP exams. So I, I don't think, um, we would stop students who are having financial trouble from taking those exams. Again, if we're doing our job, or if our.
That's actually a really important thing I didn't bring up there, but in each of those options that we talked about earlier, there is a variant, which is to say that we continue to pay for the exam students demonstrate financial need. So, of course, that will cut away a little bit of savings from each of the options, but it would take the edge off of this.
And, and Jim, I would, I would recommend that regardless of what option we choose, that paying for the AP exams for any students that have financial common element across whatever option. Yes.
And there shouldn't be a, a limit on the number of, of any student of financial need, uh, as to how many exams that the, the district would pay. Because it, uh, that should not be a criteria whatsoever.
Those, those exams, just, just for, as at a vacation, uh, cost fifty-three dollars each, the normal.
Now.
To consider a seventh option or eighth option, I think we're up to now, um, but who's counting? Uh, would be for the district to, uh, no longer actually pay in advance, um, for the, 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 the testing, but have it be a rebate in which, uh, if, if someone were to apply, um, to be reimbursed for the cost, uh, that would help eliminate the, uh, the concerns that sometimes arise when, uh, people who have hardships are less likely to volunteer, uh, that information and, and have that fee waived in advance, but, uh, instead, uh, have individuals or families apply, uh, for a rebate. And those who, uh, who actually go forward with that would, uh, if they're, if they qualify, uh, would be reimbursed.
Okay, so, Paul, if I understand correctly, then you're talking about a model where pay for all the AP exam, but then if you are not financial need, um, could?
If, if, if you're in financial need, you can apply in advance to waive the fee. So you wouldn't have to pay, uh, anything in advance if you choose to go that route. Otherwise, um, the family would pay, um, how, or the, I'm sorry, this, yes, the family would pay, but would be able to be reimbursed through an application process for the fee that they incurred.
Una.
Exactly. Very common concept in marketing, as we all know, are rebates. Um, so you purchase a product and, and there's a rebate form that you have to send in. Well, the, the reason it's a very common prop, uh, process is because there's a term called slippage, which means the majority of people in most cases never actually apply for that rebate. In this case, uh, people who have a hardship would probably be more likely to apply, and those that don't would be less likely to, um, hopefully resulting in a, a fair cost savings for the, the district.
Paul, would you suggest that be for all exams or just for any exam student take or up to a certain limit or number of exams?
I would prefer to, to not have a limit on that. I would prefer to, uh, to allow the students that are, are able to benefit from the, from the coursework as well as from the exams, in the cases where it's accepted by colleges, be able to have that benefit. Um, but I, I have a strong suspicion that the cost savings in people who don't apply for the rebate will completely offset that. So if you have a child that's taking, um, four AP courses or one AP course, if you're not going to apply for the, for the four to get a rebate or be reimbursed, you won't apply for it in any case.
So to be clear, you're saying you do not want district to pay for any of them? So, so we're not.
Unless, unless you, well, unless you, uh, demonstrate a financial need.
Okay. So we wouldn't say, okay, every student gets one that we pay for?
Correct.
Okay.
But, but that same family could apply rebate and be reimbursed if they choose. Yes.
What would be the basis for qualifying, just simply by applying?
Yes.
Wait.
Going to be, that, I, I, I really like the concept there because we're, we're tapping into some differentiation in the community in terms of people feel about their ability to pay, their own ability. I, I, uh, I can speak for the high school administrators, that's going to be a, a huge administrative matter to keep track of that. Not, doesn't include disqualify as an idea because I, I really love the idea, but we'd have to upfront distinguish or, or identify those students in need because we wouldn't take any money from them like we do now. And then we take money from everybody else. And then everybody else. See, the, the other, other flying instrument is it costs ninety-four dollars for a student to pay for a test from the college board. When they, when they do that, the district collects the money, the district retains nine dollars for a fee, and we don't do any of that because we don't collect any money right now. And then the, the remaining eighty-five dollars goes as to college board. We have to decide, we're going to collect ninety-four, which is what the stated fee is, and if we're going to rebate the whole ninety-four or eighty-five, we can, there's some, there's some, uh, deals there.
Upper Merian, we did collect the fees and we used that extra nine dollars, though, to help provide business for students who needed it.
To date, we haven't collected them at all.
Right.
Haven't collected any money, so good start. Anytime, in, in any fashion, whether students pay for one or two or whatever, or all of them. Anytime, i- in any fashion, whether students pay for one or two or whatever, or all of them, we would collect that nine dollars now. We had decided we're gonna rebate that or not. Probably not, I guess.
So to um, try to like narrow down the, the universe of options here. Based on the comments, I'm getting, I'm getting the sense that no one would be in favor of um, completely eliminating paying for exam. Like the, the end of the spectrum where we completely eliminate or for AP exam. That, that be fair to say?
Can I ask a question? Is there? Um, so we're gonna have a meeting next Monday.
Yep.
Could we maybe mull over all of these options that we have here tonight? And then come back next Monday with how each board member would wanna vote. That way we would have a better idea instead of trying to make a decision of eight different options. Is that a fair solution?
And can I ask Wade just one question? The simplest way from your standpoint, would that be just to require each, that each student only we would pay one for one AP exam?
Per year?
Per year.
So I'll sort of answer it the other way. I think like Dr. Chris Field. Um, only the, the um, the option that Dr. Chris Field was mentioning is probably gonna be you know, fairly difficult just because if we do the rebates, that's going to be it's three hundred individual checks that we would be writing to that. It's not uh, not very difficult at all. Or, and one check probably uh, most of the other scenario.
So would it be safe to say that um, the majority of the board would be interested in moving away from paying for everything? Or how much kind of unlimited? Yes. So then really it's a question of what sort of hybrid model um, find acceptable?
To make matters easy, now that I've heard this conversation and got the input from students and got some other options. That's for the high school administration, I think on Monday, the tenth, come with a recommendation. Now that I've heard where everybody stands, have to.
Sure, that'd be fine.
Something in the middle that we're talking about. Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, um, well, after that uh, interesting discussion, I guess I'll, I'll give uh, our student board reps the opportunity to uh, to leave, um, or feel free to stay for the remainder. Wanna get on with your evening, you're, you're welcome to, but we appreciate your input tonight on the topic. Thanks, guys. All right, reporter, Assistant Superintendent, Terry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Antonio. No report this evening.
Okay, uh, reporter, the solicitor, Del.
Thank you. No report of the solicitor tonight.
Reporter, the board secretary, Wade, any changes from last week?
There are no.
And board treasurer?
Uh, no changes.
Great. Board committee reports, uh, accusations, Ronnie, anything new since last week?
Items.
Okay, uh, curriculum and technology, Ron?
There are no items.
Right. Phillies and transportation, Tracy?
There are no new items.
Okay. And the finance committee, David?
Think we may have a new item.
All right. Broke our streak.
Sorry.
Ah, it's okay.
We may have a new item. There we go.
Wanna go to the policy?
Um. Here we, here we got it.
Sorry about the delay. Um, so uh, at this point of the year, we um, try to uh, look back. The board has already had the, most of the information in this uh, presentation. So this presentation is probably more geared for the public. Um, but we look at where we were for last year, how we ended up. And then we start looking a little bit into how the budget cycle is going to be and what some of our challenges are. So what happens next, I guess, is the um, preparing the individual pieces of the budget, have meetings about the potential new items, make assumptions because it's very, very early in the cycle. But we do need to make uh, prepare and uh, provide to the board a uh, budget because as the next item discusses, um, we are going to need to have a budget together to, to um, provide to the board in the December and January timeframe. Going uh, for the look back, we compared two thousand sixteen results with two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Um, at this point, as you can see from seventeen, eighteen, our entity is approximately one hundred million dollars. Uh, we were very fortunate in that we had a hundred million uh, plus in revenue and a little less than a hundred million in expenses. So we increased our fund balance by six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, uh, which was again, very, very uh, favorable. Uh, we had a very good financial year. And included in the explanation for expenses, we were able to transfer one point eight million dollars to capital projects. So between the two years, um, that was a transfer of four million dollars to capital projects, which again is incredibly favorable, positive. Um, from the standpoint of uh, where the increases were year to year, most of it really was tax increase. The transfer tax actually went down a little bit, the EIT went up a little bit. Um, but most of the increase of the two point nine was tax increase. From the state revenue perspective, the point nine, um, that almost entirely was from PSERS. And for the public, on the expense side, as we're gonna see in some slides later, we have a large expense increase for PSERS, which is our retirement system. And we get fifty percent of that money back from the state and it shows up as a revenue. Um, so other than PSERS, which is mandated, our state revenue was flat and our federal revenue was flat as well. Again, from the public standpoint, just as a caption of, of where um, our revenue comes from to run Wissahickin School Districts. Um, unlike some school districts, we're considered very, very uh, wealthy cause compared to other districts in um, the state of Pennsylvania. And therefore, most of our money comes from local revenue, eighty percent. Uh, state revenue is nineteen percent and federal revenue is very small, or five hundred thousand dollars. This is a pie chart of our total expenses. This is budgeted uh, eight, uh, eighteen, nineteen, but it would be pretty much the same for actual. The blue is salaries, the red is benefits. And uh, that is, um, I wrote it down because my eyes are not gonna be able to read those little numbers. But it's eighty-two percent of the overall um, expenditures for the district. So um, eighty-two percent of our budget is um, salary and benefits. And that is not surprising considering we're a service organization and we have uh, lots of teachers and aides and people delivering uh, instruction into the classroom. Um, we have various other items that are uh, included throughout, but eighty-two percent are salary and benefits. Each year we look at challenges for uh, the years ahead, uh, and opportunities. So for nineteen twenty, um, the continued challenge is PSERS. As we're gonna see a slide of just how much of our budget goes to PSERS. Um, on the challenges as well, expense, which is facility plans. Um, we've had many conversations about capacity and um, last year and then starting this year as well, and we may have uh, facility needs going forward. Number three is part of that, which is keeping an eye on enrollment projections. We've um, discussed um, one internal and two external enrollment projections, which I'll look forward to uh, increasing enrollment for Wissahickin, which is great, meaning lots of people wanna be here. And a challenge from the standpoint that the additional children, um, we need to provide teachers for them and additional facilities potentially. Um, I crossed off four and five and left them there just because I wanted to uh, explain to the board why. Um, real estate tax uncertainty was the discussion at the state level, which was periodically in Ron's, uh, Mr. Stoloff shaking his head because um, at this point, it's quiet and you never know when it's gonna come up again. Uh, periodically, somebody at the state's going to say, hey, we should really not have real estate taxes. Let's increase our state income tax or our um, you know, liquor tax or whatever it would be. Um, so whatever those discussions are, um, right now they're quiet, so I've crossed it off. Um, if it re- comes up again, we'll likely hear it through the legislative reports. Um, but right now it is quiet. Um, number five is real estate tax assessment appeals. Uh, we've had some favorable um, conclusions to real estate assessment appeals. And quite frankly, have lost less than uh, we had thought in the past and many have cleared up. So we still have real estate assessment appeals, but um, less than we've had in the past. And the dollars associated with those assessment appeals is the lowest it's been in many, many years. Overall, um, if you look over that chart in however many years it is, maybe fourteen years, um, we have had an increasing overall assess valuation. Um, a small downturn this year. So the total is three billion, six hundred and eighty-five million dollars worth of assess valuation last year. And it's down uh, fifteen million dollars this year. Part of that is the reflection of some of those assessment appeals that we had talked about. Um, you know, and it wasn't as negative as it could be, so I actually do look at that as an actual positive. PSERS, as we intro'd a couple of slides ago, um, has been a driver for our budget and everybody in Pennsylvania, um, all school districts. So in thirteen, fourteen, we were at seven million. Um, next year, we're going to be at seventeen point six estimate. So ten million dollars additional budget just for PSERS. And as we discussed in the um, audit presentation, uh, we have absolutely no opinion on any of those numbers other than how many employees we hire. Um, so um, a ten million dollar increase is significant for us as it is for everybody else as well. The actual percentages, um, we go even further back here, but there was a time in eight, oh, eight, oh, nine, when it was only five percent. Don't you wish we could be back to those days? And now we're at almost thirty-five percent. So that is an incredible increase over that period of time. The good news is um, at the state level, they are addressing the overall um, unfunded liability of PSERS. This chart um, is where we're going with PSERS. Um, Tim, our, the assistant business administrator, put in a, we are here, which was very helpful. We're at thirty-five percent. And um, generally, we are going to be in that band for probably about sixteen years. And then at that point, actuarially, they believe that it'll reduce over a period of time. Um, till if any of us are here twenty forty-eight, it'll be back down to uh, four percent. Um, any of you, I guess I should say. Uh. Challenges uh, for nineteen twenty and opportunities. So as we talked about, elementary building capacity is very, very high. Um, and from a maintenance standpoint, we certainly have to um, certainly consider that uh, only lower Gwinnett is sort of a newer building and at this point, it's really not new. The other buildings are average age of fifty years or older. Um, the board has been very, very supportive of us uh, keeping up on maintenance projects, roof projects, uh, window projects, various other projects. So the buildings are in uh, very, very good condition compared to their years, uh, but they are um, elderly buildings at this point. From the standpoint, again, of an overall context, um, our mileage rate is the second lowest in Montgomery County by a small fraction. Um, it's ten percent basically difference between us and District Nineteen. So I don't think we're going to uh, fall out of either the last spot or the second to last spot anytime soon. Uh, timeline going forward, we've already found out that the Act One index is two point three percent. Um, January, the, the state puts together a timeframe for when we have to uh, meet their various hurdles. Um, so for, according to our scheduled uh, meetings, by January fourteenth, we need to decide whether or not we're going to adopt a preliminary budget with exceptions. And we believe we will have them for both the special education and PSERS. Or we will be have the ability to pass a resolution staying within the two point three percent index. Um, so that's really the only decision that we have to make and that's, you know, what we do every year in the January timeframe. And then regardless, um, we'll have various meetings through uh, May and June when we anticipate the adoption of our nineteen twenty budget. And that's just a quick synopsis. And again, the board has primarily heard much of that at the audit committee and otherwise. Um, are there any other questions? All right.
Wade, um, do you need us to make a decision on um, whether or not we're going to pass a resolution to stay within the two point three index? Do we need that?
So we were, we are right now, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Antonio. Um, the, we are right now um, all working um, to put together a budget. And when we do, then I review it and then cabinet's going to review it. Um, and then we're hopeful that we'll have that together for the board by the end of January, excuse me, the end of December or the very, very early part of January. We'll put together a summary and then on January um, seventh and fourteenth, we'll have discussions. And then hopefully vote on the fourteenth as to whether we're gonna stay within the index or not.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So for the finance committee? Okay, thanks. Um, policy, Carol, anything new since last week?
Nothing new.
Anyone have any other additional questions about the policies from last week?
Since I missed the meeting and I know we have an upcoming meeting, there was a change to our procedure, correct?
The policy committee is meeting next Monday, the tenth.
But our, the way that we're approaching um, how we're doing, the review of the policies has changed, correct?
Um, it, it's, as I would say more that what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're going to um, first get all the policies looking the same visually. Then get all the references updated. Double grease there. And then, then we'll go um, section by section.
Hey, reporter, the personnel director, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Um, any additions to um, the voting items are highlighted for you. They're just um, four different coaches that we hired.
Okay, um, for the board representatives, we uh, gave those reports last week. I don't think there's any new information. So now we're moving on to fifteen board voting item. And I know that there's one item fifteen I five, which is the list of payments, which we're going to pull out group. So can I have a motion to approve items fifteen A through fifteen K? Excluding item fifteen I five for documents fifteen D one through fifteen K six?
Second.
Uh, motion has been approved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And can I have a motion to approve item fifty I five?
So moved.
Motion has been approved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Yeah, opposed or abstaining?
Um, yes, I will be abstaining from this vote due to my employment with one of the vendors. I will submit this abstention in writing. Thank you.
I will get that right uh, one of these meetings. Slowly but surely.
We did just reelect you, so maybe this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little rusty, a rusty. Okay, uh, let's see. Now we're going to public comments. Um, now we'll hear public comments on any school related topics. And we have one speaker, Christine De Laurentis. Um, as a reminder, instructions for speakers are noted in the agenda document.
Christine De Laurentis, Ambler. Um, I have two things. One is AP. As a parent, um, a parent of a senior, she took, my daughter took two AP classes in, as a junior and she's taking two AP classes as a senior. She has peers that are taking five both years. Um, and personally, my daughter thinks they're crazy, but you know. Um, as a parent, we are in a financial position to pay for those classes if we need to. But I do know that she has peers that do not have that luxury. And I don't know if they would take them or not, depending on whether they're funded. Um, as a parent, we also did not push our daughter to take AP classes. It is not our goal to pay for her college education in high school. I, I want her, as a parent, to take them, to push herself in the classes and in, in the, in the areas that she excels at and she needed to be pushed in. So having her take that test at the end is immaterial to our goal. But she thinks it's great and she did well on them last year and she expects to do well on them this year. That her school that she's going to is going to accept them is a bonus, but it was not our purpose. Every parent, every family has a different purpose in their child in taking those AP classes. So it's hard to predict how anybody was, is going to act. But I thought having another parent's perspective would be helpful. Um, that's not why I filed my blue sheet tonight. Um, I'm going to be unable to take, to be at the meeting next week, so this is the last time I'm going to see you until next year. time I'm going to see you until next year, and I wanted to make sure that you are all fully aware that three of our seniors in the high school marching band have been chosen to participate in the cavalcade honor band at the Rose Bowl Parade on January first. So Ryan Cleary will be playing tenors, Amanda, Abby Dean D'Amico will be playing in the color guard, and my daughter Bethany is playing cymbals. They will be marching in Pasadena on January first, very early in the morning, five and a half miles and performing for over one million people along the parade route, not counting who's going to be watching on television. I highly encourage everyone to tune in and watch our students. They're very excited and they'll be practicing a couple more times this month before they all fly out just after Christmas.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board comment, any comments from my fellow board members?
Well, since this will be our last televised meeting before the holidays, I wanted to wish everybody celebrating Hanukkah, a happy Hanukkah, and for all those celebrating Christmas, Merry Christmas, and happy Kwanzaa. And anything else that I might have missed?
Right. I would like to second Tracy's comment about all the, everyone's faith celebration. I would also like to congratulate our board leaders, Joe and Tracy, for picking up the cudgel for another year. Because we all know what a great job you do, and we shudder, I think, pretty much in general, that the finger might point to one of us for one of those positions. But without them, the board does not move, and the district would probably irritate Dr. Chris Field even more.
Well, it's on behalf of myself, it's my pleasure. Increase in pay is always helpful. I'm kidding, it's zero. But I'm thrilled and I thank you all for your confidence.
I have one comment. Seven, nothing, quarter.
Sounds great. Any other comments? All right. Well, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.